Tonight is Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would stand with me please and I will lead you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm seated. First on our agenda tonight is public comment as it is in the meeting. So I would open the floor if there is anyone here who would like to address the board. I'll come to the podium, state your name, and if you'd like to address the board of them. Well, it seems as if there isn't anybody who wishes to address the board. So I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. And we will move to the second item that we have, and that is, and I will hold that for the moment, the Historic Preservation Proclamation. But Lynn Barton, our village historian, is here. And she has a presentation to give to the board. So Lynn?
Not very exciting, but...
That's okay. Can I just know a little bit about what's going on?
Yeah, the museum's been very busy, of course. Right now they've got a display on the historic properties. The Historic Properties Committee, and we've given out over eighty plaques through the town of Webster to historic properties within the town, and we've given some here in the village. So the display right now, which will stay up, I think, through most of the summer, is some of those properties and some of the architectural feature type houses you'll find here in the town. So that's up right now if anyone wants to go by and see it. The museum's working on cleaning out some clutter up in the attic. And we're hoping in a couple of weeks to get a small dumpster. And so we'll have to block off part of the south of our parking lot near the back stairs. And hopefully we'll get some help, right Jake?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm gonna look at the stuff and make sure there's nothing good.
No, believe me, it's not. It's, you know, years and years ago, they used to have some people that got really excited about building floats and things for the parades and all kinds of stuff. And none of the volunteers now are interested. So there's lumber, two-by-fours, there's just stuff like that up there, and we want to get rid of it and clean out so they have more space to collect more things. So anyway, that's the museum. I've been relatively busy. I have, we've got almost eleven thousand line, lines of, what do I want to say? Input into our database for the historian's office. I do store things in there that belong to the museum, documents, things like that. They just don't have anywhere to store it. So those are in there, and they're identified in their database and in the one I have. I've gotten two new volunteers, so I'm up to five now. The old ambulance from Jackson Road, Mr. Anasayad Mustafa called, and they wanted to donate things to the museum or the historian's office. So, oh my lord, there's a lot of stuff there to still go through. So I'm working on that. I've got some fire department stuff in there that has nothing to do with me as a historian, but it's in there because I'm working on that at home. I scanned a lot of the slides, so they're digitized. And we, I may have found someone with a sixteen millimeter old movie projector because I've got old film. And I, it's from Mary Holber, Judy will know. So there could be some Webster films in there that I could get digitized, but I don't know because I don't have a projector. So we're working on that to try and get one. I'm meeting, like, June fourth, I'm going to the Webster Union Cemetery to meet up with the Penfield Library Historian, and we're gonna compare notes on Asa Bass, who lived here in North Penfield, Webster. He was an early Black resident, they had a farm down there. And we're, and she also wants to talk about the Underground Railroad, which we don't have any exact records that prove anything. The only, I have the old McNath House on East Main Street. If you pull out Dunning Avenue, it's a little brownish house, 118 East Main, like, straight ahead. And that's where Mr. McNath, Reverend McNath, lived. Supposedly he helped transfer folks, I think to Polkneyville, where they would catch a ship and go to freedom. So, anyway, but I can't prove it, it's just folklore. My eighteen-year-old printer has died, so I am buying a new one. But eighteen years, I love that printer. Next week, we're going to NBT Bank, back by Goodwill, off of the ridge. And they called, and they're gonna give the museum a twenty-five-hundred dollars donation. So they're having a big grand opening. So, and the museum needs a new furnace, so we've, Tom, the president, has applied for a grant through the Chamber of Commerce, because, you know, it's a lot of money. And then I have some slides, just real quickly, some of the things that I get questions on.
I've been totally going through them as you were talking.
Oh, that's okay. So, you know, you've all gone by the house on West Main, on the north side. It's a gray house. It doesn't have the kupuwa anymore on top. It's just down, it's not down very far, almost right across from Corning Park. So supposedly Dr. Reynolds lived there. He came to our area in about eighteen seventeen, and he sold remedies, you know, bottled lung restoratives and things, and that's the house today. So a young couple and some partners that purchased it. And Alice Dunn's been helping me. She's, she's the lady to go to if you want to have deeds looked at, because I, they're hard to understand. But anyway, so they, we got to go tour it, tour it a week ago, which was really cool. So if you keep going. While I got a call from them, they came over and brought me a photo album about two inches thick that they found in the wall on the second floor that must have come through the attic. And none of the pictures are labeled. There were a couple of cards in there for Smith, which I guess lived nearby. So we don't know if Smiths lived there at one time or, or what. Now, this is from a booklet that the village put out. This is the gray house, but it says that it's at eighty-seven West Main Street, which is the first house west of the Methodist Church where Maria's is. It's a big white house that Dr. Reynolds lived, was, he lived there. So it gets confusing, so we had to kind of prove, that's why I have Alice involved. But I got two other calls at the same time, people looking into Hicks. And Dr. Reynolds' daughter married a Hicks, and they lived in her, in this house until, you know, he died, and then she ended up passing away. Keep going, move to the next one. That's what it was in. So it, it just makes it confusing, you know, when you find something like that. That's the album. That's one of the pictures in it. It's quite early, there's some tin types and other things. These were the cards that were in it. Maybe someday we'll figure it out. This is inside of the upper floor, they're gonna make it into an apartment. You can see the, where they use the hatchet to get these, it's post and beam. Can you go back one?
Yep.
You can see on the right-hand photo how, you know, what they have for posts and things up there. So you can tell it's pretty early. Okay, the next one, we went down in the basement, and you can see the logs with the bark still on them, holding up that section of the house. So we know it's early. He bought the property in about, between eighteen thirty and eighteen thirty-five. When he first came here, he bought two acres up by eighty-seven, up by the Methodist Church, and sold off through the years. And I think he lived there for a short while, then he moved here. He had built the corner where the Mary Wee is, he had built that at some point, probably in the eighteen thirties also. It's too bad we still don't have that cobblestone. Yeah.
It's an Henni though, ain't it?
Hmm?
Is it Henni?
Yes, it wasn't, and then it became Henni historic for a long time. And then, of course, where the wooden part is attached to it, that's where Burke's is now.
Yep.
Exactly where Burke's is, and I think that, that's nineteen nineteen. So is there another one? I didn't bring any, that's, that's it.
No, that was...
Just, I wanted to give you an example because the one person that called with Hicks lives on Lake Road, and he was wanting information because Mr. Reynolds owned property on Lake Road. He owned fifty-five acres on the corner where the cobblestone was that went down South Avenue and down West Main. He owned fifty-five acres there at one time. So I think he, he was pretty well-to-do when he came here. Those are the types of calls that I get. And, yeah, it's, it gets a little hard to keep up with all the emails and things, but, you know, I do my best. So anyway, that's it. Oh, okay, Josh, you come up here. Josh, oh, I was gonna mention too, I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission with Josh over here, and Peter, and we have a new member, Tim Frinzi. Anyway, he sent in all the paperwork to hopefully will be approved to make the village of Webster a historic district. Which would help with renovations. That's all we need.
Yeah, one step at a time.
Well, I'd like to read this. This is Historic Preservation Month Proclamation. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas two thousand twenty-five is being celebrated as harnessing the power of place, highlighting people who have made contributions toward historic preservation in their communities. Resolve, therefore, that I, Mayor Byers, Mayor of the Village of Webster and the Village Board of Trustees do recognize natal two thousand twenty-five as Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the people of the Village of Webster to recognize and participate in this special observance. And this will be put in my office, specifically for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sam Judy, you want a drink on that?
Yeah, would you mind, I'm sorry?
Historic or let her go up there?
Would you guys mind if we get one more, Judy? And show everybody? Come on, Judy.
You got him?
We'll finish him.
Yep. Thank you, Lynn.
Lynn, the post and beam that you're talking about, I wasn't clear. Okay. At this time, we will move into village business. And first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from May eighth. Will do, you all have. If you whip them over, I would ask for a motion to approve. I don't think anything is missing. As I move forward.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item we have is a resolution to approve claims of warrants.
I don't have any questions.
I didn't have any.
Jake?
No, no, it's a...
I got some, yeah. Nothing crazy. Williamson... Williamson, whatever. Service, distribution. Why don't we go, Uncle Williamson, is there anybody closer we can utilize for service?
This for one of the big trucks, is what he's on. Uh, for Williamson Drucker, there, it's one of the larger, one of the states' wheelers. And it locally is dealers or have to go through, like Freightliner or Tracy.
It's also in Webster, but... All right, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to authorize the building inspector to attend the highway school for a cost of seven hundred and thirty-one dollars for hotel and meal. It looks like this is going to be Mayor Cornell...
Ithaca.
Ithaca?
Yep.
This is one that the department usually goes to. We can't make it this year due to prior commitment. So we don't want to miss your opportunity with a lot of the, you know, good education and training that's there. You know, the legal channels are always really good, like VZ and ICOM. You know, and some of the other items there, the OGS contracts and community in the boards, things like that, and funding, I think would be great stuff. Right away stuff, so... Yeah, right away things.
I think that this is good education for you, especially in this year of working for the village, basically. So this is a good opportunity.
Play, uh, the radio, and highly the instructors, so pretty well versed in it. With any means, education is always a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just make that, oh, a couple days, there's a lot of inspections here. That's Jake.
That's right.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee, Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, next, we have a motion, a resolution and yet, a motion to authorize the Burke group. And this is to complete the annual Gatsby seventy-five valuation at a cost not to exceed three thousand five hundred dollars. This is something I believe that needs to be done every year. Correct?
We did it last year.
Same people.
Same price?
Yes. I'm actually, I apologize for not answering that. It's usually not exorbitant to the point where the other audits are. But something that's required every year. But I did include the contract that you already signed, and it covered us for a while, so it may save the cost in there, I apologize. I think that's what it was, but I don't know if it changed last year.
Well, it looks like they go back and forth here, and this is where in two thousand twenty-five, so it looks like it's a full valuation, and then that year it becomes an interim, and then a full interim.
Oh, yes, yes.
Kind of each year, year.
Yes, it's not the full every year, but, right, yeah.
Right. And this is before the board, you know, the...
Lots of data.
You got the first data?
That is something when it started.
Data.
Who's data?
On the first sheet. Bottom of the first sheet.
Oh, yeah, look at the board members' personal data. Especially if you work at Frontier.
Is something wrong?
No, he's asking what data are they?
It's right here. It's an awful lot of gender, age, names.
Yep.
Yes, who does? So that's a good question, actually.
Yes.
Blood type.
No, it's, um, it looks at medical.
Medical data.
Medical benefits.
Well, it says more than that here, though.
Yeah.
Who's medical?
Employees.
That's what this is, that they gotta be there every year.
It's a, an OSC, Office of State Control, or it has a certain amount of requirements every year, and Gatsby seventy-five is one of them. And it just kind of goes over post-retirement and healthcare benefits.
To make sure your status matches up, your beneficiaries, all that stuff.
All right, all right.
It helps with...
It's pretty standard, but important.
Fraud and all that.
You got something similar?
No, no.
They have less requirement than us.
That was a good question. It's a lot of information.
It's everything about everybody.
This started in twenty-two. Can you get this, it's the first date of the time here in terms of, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yep.
This is the third year, right? If there's a time going on.
Yeah. Well, we just did a contract that covered more than one, but we haven't been doing it ever since I started with the Burke group. But I think they thought it would be easier to just do a long-term one.
For the board. For the...
Correct. I haven't really been here, sorry.
Other word, the board member. I've never given an account number, hour for benefits coverage, or like, really, all of those.
Yeah.
This is really a deep dive in some ways.
It's just employees.
It's employees that had us, and that...
Yeah, employees only.
I'm not talking about me.
Oh, I'm talking about...
So this is in medical and insurance, anyways, they have all that information already?
Oh, all right.
They have your social, they have all those things.
It's for the protection of the employees. It's, it's to make sure that they're getting the benefits that are necessary and correct, and so they check all that. So it's actually to protect the employees.
Okay, so I would ask for a motion to approve unauthorized the Burke group to complete the annual Gatsby seventy-five valuation.
Make that a motion. Second.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes. There's also a similar audit for people's deferred comp as well. So pretty much any, any type of benefit that, that the village offers to employees, the OSC wants to make sure that it's being properly used.
I still don't understand why, you know...
You're verifying what they have on record to what, what they're having, so it's... It's really what it is. And trust me, they have it all on you.
Yeah, exactly.
Your fore, your fore is listening to it now, and it probably...
I'll look into it.
All right, next we have a resolution to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Village Act warrant. This is inclusive of the general fund. Several sums named here, but general fund, six hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. Business Improvement District, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. Sewer Fund, three thousand, three hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, and Commercial Sewer for sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is a total of one million, forty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And it's, you know... Did it change this as act?
It was a calculation error.
She changed it, she was blocking it.
A calculation error?
Yeah.
One million, forty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And Village Clerk will be in receipt of role and warrant of collection of taxes. I will mention this, levied by the Village of Webster Board of Trustees, and will receive taxes at Village Hall, twenty-eighth West Main Street, from June first, two thousand twenty-five, to and include July first, two thousand twenty-five, from eight AM for thirty PM, except for Friday, when the office is open from eight AM until eleven AM. And Saturday and Sunday, and all government holidays, it will be closed. So taxes unpaid as of July second. Interest of five percent shall be added for the month of July, an additional one percent for each month of fraction erun, eract. And we've mentioned eract, and we don't know, I guess we need to have a resolution to approve the tax warrant. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Before you get started on this next one, I just disregard this form of paper. There was a second page of the strike sheet, there's one with two trucks on it.
Two.
And it's actually the results of the auction, not the surplus declarations.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and, yeah, no, that was, I think, I had the strike sheet and surplus declarations, and it was just the second page that was on there, I think it was, probably seven or eight pages open. But this is the results, we put two vehicles, we have other stuff in the auction right now, we put two vehicles up, and it appeared, my recommendation to accept the bid on the twenty-eighteen F-350 platform truck, that platform dump, but to reject the bid on the twenty-eighteen twenty-five hundred, there should be twenty-five hundred pickup. The platform truck was, had a final bid of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars. We've got it done, and since the board, we have to vote to accept the bid and reject the bid.
I think the, yeah, the flip, that's a pretty good price.
Yeah.
No one, I think we paid one, mid-thirty, so... No one, I think we gave one mid-thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six or something.
Thirty-seven, eighty something. So, yeah, it was a, it was very low cost of ownership.
Not many houses.
Yeah.
That's uh Jake, I think you said that we'll be able to use the uh second one there.
Yeah.
Reject that down at the sewer and do that.
Yeah, not kidding, what we're looking for, and I think we can refer, is that one at sewer, basically you're describing, and when there's a dump truck down there, and then we'll swaddle them and get it, it's a mid-size, like a landscape dump truck down there, where we can bring up the pallets, so save on. So that was a, you know, a change of operations down there, that you don't really need the dump truck all the time down there like you did for handling slides and that, so we'll, they got a hopper, and then send that and break the stump.
Yeah.
How we should vote on this?
I think you got to vote on the exception and the reasons.
I think, yeah, it's both, so I guess as long as everybody's.
Okay, is it?
Maybe, maybe we have a resolution to accept the bid on the F three fifty and reject the bid on the twenty-five hundred.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Well, you all can second.
Oh, third.
Trustee Lancy? Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed. Can you say that one more time, Jake? Accepted bid for the F three fifty?
Yes, for the F three fifteen, probably like the amount that was described is thirty-one thousand, three hundred and one.
Uh huh.
And reject that, I did for the twenty-eighteen Chevy twenty-five hundred. And they had twenty-three thousand, three hundred.
Way too many numbers. I'll come to you after that.
Right.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have a resolution to approve budget mods and transfers. Um, you have a list of them in front of you. I'm not sure I'm going to read through the whole thing.
You don't have to. No, no.
However, uh.
You can implement a whole.
Include coffee release, personnel time, the copter associates, centrifuge, health insurance, increased passport postage, and increase in deurol, um APD, overall not enough budgeted, uh, Don White.
Adam forgot.
Uh, payroll fees, add two thousand twenty-five Chevy and Mack truck, and microphones, audio cables, sign for podium, and payroll. All of those have had appropriate uh from and to in terms of money to remove from input into appropriate time and job. I would ask for a motion to approve the budget mods.
I'd like the motion.
Second.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Uh, next we have a mo- or a resolution to authorize the Superintendent of Public Works to hire two seasonal, one returning at sixteen fifty, uh, fifteen dollars and fifty cents, and one new person starting at sixteen dollars per hour. I believe, Jake, that these would be our summer help, right?
Yes.
Start in June?
Or as soon as they get, yeah, some of them are out of school now, and one of them can start on the twenty-eighth, and the other one I I think the check with the returning guy, I think he was, he was about to knock.
And he's returning, so he has experience to share with the new hire.
Yeah, yeah, we'll um likely have him doing stuff and all the season guys working on the new guy, that show him their roles, and then hopefully he'll enjoy it and have that experience here, and then we'll have to try and do whatever you.
Yes, yes. We met with him this week, and he was great, and he worked at Seabreeze for four years, doing a lot of like Wednesday meetings, and he already had a lot of experience, and he was really nice, so I was impressed.
So we'll can make this resolution to authorize you, Jake, to hire these two, and you have him show up, maybe you can meet that? Hello, do you have?
You have to pay him, you know. Hourly staff would pay him.
Strictly.
Strictly.
Makes a video of them introducing themselves.
Right, Jake will let them out an hour early. All right, uh, the last thing, and this is an addition to maybe earlier this week we defeated that, uh, the union contract, and um I looked it open, and I believe all of you have had this. It's in the email, it's through hard copy. The items that have experienced change, all of you are aware of, and we basically approved them, the last over the course of time here. Um, so the formal contract is due to us at this point, and if you don't have any further questions or any reservations regarding that, we could hold on that tonight.
Yeah.
Let's do it, that's well. That way it would be in place, starting June first, and that would make office life a little bit easier.
You guys are good, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Are me?
I was just testing if they were good with all those changes. Of course. Yeah.
All right.
And it's posted to the website.
And I do like the change that has been made, because it's a better clarification than what was promised between two thousand and nine and two thousand and twenty and what we did. Uh, I do appreciate that, Jake, and I do approve that you hire, looking at the first three years at initial rate, and then at the end of that tie, um, should they continue, then move them to to appropriate change.
And with Don being absent, I don't know if you have a hesitation, since I've signed it too, would a resolution include authorization for both the mayor and myself to sign?
Yeah.
So I would ask for a motion that we accept the union contract as it is written, and allow authorization for the mayor and for the Superintendent of Public Works to sign the contract for the union, running from two thousand and twenty-five to five years until two thousand and three.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
That you.
Yeah, I'll make that one.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right.
Thank you.
You're gonna be happy?
Nice.
Okay, at this time, I think we'll move Chris to you, uh, for enforcement. Looks like he had a pretty hefty convention here and drove to things that he's been doing.
Yeah, I understand, but yeah, the reports are, again, we don't look back. It's not, anybody's very wondering if you guys have any questions about it, I'll figure it out. One thing we were talking about in the office was uh reinstating like a CPR training, so I'm gonna look into that and see if we can get some prices for that. Pretty much all like that.
Kiss me cookie?
We're communicating, they're, they don't have any approvals yet, but we're working on it. So hopefully they're not open.
I just see the sign that they're coming.
Yeah.
Showing up overnight.
It should be a pretty easy one.
Yeah.
But we don't know that yet for sure, so.
Okay.
How about two East Main Street?
Two?
With the plastic on the windows?
Oh, they got other approvals. We walked through it, and then a couple of the guys were working in there the other day. It seemed to be going pretty slowly.
Jake, one major application, the same business.
Yes, yeah, with his last name, Yusuf. He went through his own board, got his variance approval and.
The other half of that building is still.
Still vacant, and they're talking about getting it rented out, but that hasn't gone anywhere yet. Still up in the air.
Any uh any movement across the street, I have a big shot to argue with.
Uh, the last I heard, they're gonna hold off on working in there for a while. I don't know what their plans are yet. Sent an initial review to the architect, and I have yet to hear back from them, it's been about a month.
Too much more, more than they anticipated.
I just think they have a few new locations that they're working on.
First.
And I get a, I think there's one, an easier one first, maybe.
Thank you.
I think the Reverend, his donation coming across the street, maybe they had a flyer.
I believe he signed it on an architect, I have not received plans for that yet, but he seems to be moving forward. He does have a number, yeah, thank you.
You busy?
Yes.
It is good. Nice flies. Happy having fun.
Thank you, Chris.
And you revoked that school this week.
Yeah, yeah, we did our twenty-four hours in service this week.
All right, while our term isn't here, did you hear anything from him? No, it's all quiet.
Other than he just asked that I post, make sure that the union contract is posted, which I did.
Didn't share it was eighty-five where he is.
What?
And he didn't share it was eighty-five degrees where he is.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Wasn't very nice.
No, it's good.
All right, Heather, anything from the court?
I do have one thing, um, you all asked me to bring it up when, as it gets closer for the July meeting. We changed December to just one meeting, um, with summer travel. You had expressed interest in changing to just one meeting in July, so I wanted to know, give people enough time to change it, if you wanted to do that. To, um, instead of two to one. You had discussed changing two months out of the year, December and July to one, or one meeting. And just doing a large.
How would that affect? How would that affect the um organization?
So you would just do it all together, like you typically combine the first one to anyway? So I just wanna check what it's scheduled for. I think it's like the eighth or something. So that's up here.
No.
You can always have a workshop that you need to, but.
It's obviously.
Yeah.
One of the, we have time, we did that, the organization, we've done.
Yeah. And that is scheduled for the tenth? Yep, or July, July tenth. So if you want, you can just cancel the twenty-fourth one.
Now, is that, you know, is that prior too, or is that during that carnival? Have they had any?
Yeah, that's the tenth is the one that's during the carnival, I think it's ninth, tenth, one, twelve. Should it just tenth of Tuesday?
The Thursday.
Oh, doesn't stop late.
That's usually the correct.
That's the one we usually change the Tuesday, then.
Yeah, then we need to fix that, so I'm glad I brought it up.
Right?
And make a Tuesday.
Tuesday, the eighth, yeah, okay. Or.
That would impact the culture to the beginning of the month, without a fourth organization meeting, you know, right? And we'll have to need to have a workshop, and you can do that, we will change that.
So scheduled for, um, any typically the organizational meeting prior, so six thirty, do you wanna do it at six, or six thirty is good?
Six. And we'll check.
Sure.
So six o'clock for one meeting?
Check, and our meeting will be then at six.
Yes, okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Uh, Jake?
Just a couple things, the, I don't know if I said it at the last meeting, but the Phillips Road sidewalk project is complete. Um, grass is starting to grow there, I thanked the residents, they were very cooperative with it, there was no issues. I think we knocked on one door, because there was a vehicle there, and the guy here had already planned his escape out across the lawn, so uh, he's near the corner, so we're all set there, and it's really went really, really well. Brush pickup, uh, it's a long weekend, so everybody's doing brush, gonna pull brush out and a lot of yard work. The brush pickup is the first full week of the month, so that June second, the week of Monday, June second. So we ask, remind everybody, ask that they have an out that's Sunday evening before and the first. They'll make the PDW guys go through and make one trip around the village, so if it's out, they'll go around and they'll pick it up. Uh, just don't wait for the machine to go by and remember to push it out. Or put it out, because then we've already gone by it. Take a big one trip around and then take the box off, take the equipment off, and keep going on to other things. The planners went out today.
Yeah.
It's like they're planning, you could get material in this year, it's gonna be a little shorter than it has been in the past, and it does. They look beautiful, they always look great, um, and I think, I forgot the name of the tall stuff in the center.
I can't remember.
Caneau lilies.
Yeah.
Great picture. Um, they're just, they were, they were really tall, so I think there's fewer of them or none of them, but um, again, I'm sure they're gonna look beautiful again like they always do.
And we have, I started interrupting, do we have anybody who came for them last fall?
We.
I know we made them available, and.
I think there was two people, I know there's one lady who wanted, she went through and was taking a bunch of them out, which is awesome, and I just, I hate to see them go away. Um, she even got a bunch, maybe been three, I think there was a, there was a smaller window, we had them out there for I forgot how many days or week, we had them out there almost. We put the thing out there, hey, come up at this time, and I think we gave it two or three day window to come up and get them and bring, you know, bring a box to put them in, newspapers, they usually put them in a box and rack them in newspapers, so they went out in their basement until the night's morning, so, but yeah, there's two or three, and which is, I think about what we've always, always had, um, maybe with, you know, new website stuff, we're gonna we'll last a little more and let people know, well, if we don't have them, I guess, we probably shouldn't. Um, but we'll see if we have anything, I don't think we have anything in there that's false, but um, I'll definitely make sure to figure that out, if we do, let people know about that, and it was great to go down.
What we do, we're wrapping them in stores, get them on the winter, yeah, they do come back, and they're beautiful.
Um, and then lastly, the Parks and Rec had a meeting end of last week, uh, with Peter Elders, the Chair of the Parks and Rec, and we're discussing, I mean, I reached out to him and tried to figure out, um, I know Chance Park needs a member, so Chance and Murray Frederick is as well, but Chance is probably one that needs it the most. You know, Parks and Rec, I know their surveys, they, their, why they're there is to give us recommendations. You know, Parks and Rec, I know their surveys, they, their, why they're there is to give us recommendations and stuff. We don't want to just make improvements that are contrary to what they're finding out people want. So we had a great meeting, and some discussions about some of the things, the tennis courts converting, uh, maybe down to one, or converting that to pickleball courts, which are very popular.
Yeah.
Tennis, there's a ton of tennis courts around in the schools, um, I'm assuming there's still, for years, there was always a school where you could use them, you could get them to use a tennis court, so, and pickleball is very, very popular. So we're discussing the improvements to the, um, the service there, improvements, uh, getting rid of the one older, oldest piece of the foot, and we have to put one for kids that are a little older on there. So just trying to reach out also to, in fact, I tried calling today, again, reach out to somebody that represents, some of that organized baseball, softball things in town, might be able to work and find out the needs for that field, it's, especially if we put in additional, I know it used to be used a lot, and now it's not really used that much, um, so either, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna invest a lot in it, it would be nice if there was some, you know, use going to it, or we look at doing something else in that field, something else that would be utilized more. So we certainly want to make sure we're doing, you know, spending people's money in line with what they want us to do, so. But I think in the next, next month or so, hopefully, one of these meetings will have something, the recommendation to the board, be able to get some thought structures down, and have recommendations for projects, you want to do there, and then start to ball around with that for massive referendum for utilizing the Parks and Rec one. And we want to be very careful about what we're doing there, too, um, because we're almost out of space. I mean, I know there's, property in the north, that there's discussions about, we don't know exactly what this is gonna do, but everyone has faced the dedicated Parks and Rec one is only replenished by new builds, so we want to make sure that, you know, I guess we're real careful about what we're doing, and not spending like we're gonna get a whole lot over here, because it's not, it's not something that's replenished very easily, so we gotta make sure it counts, I guess, is what we're doing stuff. That's it.
Mayor Byers, sorry, I misspoke, it was scheduled for the eighth, Tuesday, the eighth, so we're good on that part, so we'll just, we'll just cancel the second one. So it was scheduled for the eighth, sorry about that.
All right, anything else, if anyone has, uh, the order? If not, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn, for that, I would announce that the board meeting will be Thursday, June twelfth, here at six-thirty PM, so with that. I want to talk about New York forward. We had a phone call today, meeting.
That's, that's New York.
That's New York.
Yeah, but with New York forward, the, the projects were.
Projects were approved.
Yeah.
I think there were, I think it was April. There were, we have around twelve of them, uh, for public and private. Um, Jake, as I think we mentioned, we need to talk about the signs coming in and out of the village, going into that, because seventy-five thousand dollars for signage, uh, things that are along the town. I don't know who we have to now go through, that is then approved, but it will, hopefully can start.
Great, um, I'm looking forward to, I don't know if there was an official announcement, I know I've seen things, but I don't.
It came out with all three of the projects for this area.
Yeah, it was on the news before we got.
Yeah, it was on the news.
Ten million dollar one, and the two four and one F and B.
The small fund part will still be announced down the road, but the big ones have been announced, and there is information on our website and Facebook page.
And I would also announce that we had a meeting today, with ESPN, which was Jax and the Town and the, and also Aida, and it was just informational from ESPN, and I would know more about the project, uh, the grant money, or the nine and a half million, and the total. And that was very positive, and I believe that they're looking to hear in either June or in July. That may be real, probably step forward, that would include then the roadways of Panama Orchard. And also towards coming out Fairlight, and also extending Panama, Attic Panama, extending over two three thousand. That's pretty good. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Make it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Union's folks, thank you for coming, appreciate it, and we'll see you June.